I would like to start by having each candidate stand up and introduce yourself. And just take about ten seconds to tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Pamela Husco-Bellamy. I live in the first county commissioner district. I have lived in Cecil County all my life. I'm very proud to live in Cecil County. And I am very glad that people where I live believe in me and I believe in them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Garrett Billmeyer. I've lived in Cecil County for about ten years. Been coming here for about forty-five years. And nice to be here. Thank you.
Jim, make sure the mic's on and hold it closer. There you go. It's on. You gotta get closer, that's all.
Okay. Sorry. Hi, my name's Garrett. That is better. My name's Garrett Billmeyer. I've lived in Cecil County for ten years. Been a tourist relative here, I guess you could say, for about forty-five years. And very pleased to be here tonight. Thank you.
Jim Mullen, I'm a candidate for county council in the first district. And I'm a self-employed real estate appraiser.
They all didn't use for ten seconds, so anyhow, I'll move on. I'm James Kraus. I live in District Five, Cecil Woods, to be exact. I just moved there in September. For all you Elton people who know, I've lived in Elton for many years. I can say I've lived in this community all my life, but I was born in Mayfield, Kentucky, because my daddy worked for the National Fireworks and they were making bullets down there and he had to go up to plant. But I'm proud to be a candidate for the county council. I think with my background, my experience, my knowledge and charter type of management of government, I can do a very good job.
Hi, I'm Keith Moore. I'm a candidate for District Five. And I live in northeast and I own a small business in northeast as well. And I married into the county about twelve years ago. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Hodge. And I am currently your Cecil County Commissioner from the fifth district. And I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. I know that government needs fixing. And I know there's a lot of improvement in government, but it's gonna rely on educated voters. And I really appreciate you all that came tonight to listen to all these candidates and learn on what they stand for and what they're gonna do for us in the future. But I am a business owner. I own several businesses in Cecil County, including I rent containers for storage, I sell trailers, and I'm also a commercial industrial landlord. And I am seeking the position of county council position when the charter form of government transitions, when we elect our new executive.
We couldn't hear the words of Garrett. I couldn't hear what's going on.
Yeah, keep the mic. It's a cheap.
Hi, I'm Mullen. I'm a candidate for county council in the first district. I'm self-employed. I have some real estate appraisers.
Thank you. A wise man once told me, "Good government is business." We're here because we want good government. And I'm so happy everybody's here tonight. We put together, this is a normal question and answer. And it's just like, we're going to walk on the table and we'll be doing this, I'll probably make about three rounds. You'll have an opportunity, thirty seconds, to ask a question of either one of the candidates or candidates. Or if you don't have a candidate to choose, I'll go to them and give all of them an idea to answer this. How about we'll have a limited amount of time for a question? If it's one, then it'll be three minutes. If it's all candidates, why not two? So and then the person who asks the question has an opportunity to come back and question answer. As you know, the question is asked if it's not addressed properly. So we will provide you that opportunity for. So with that, I have to start the question and answer. What we got in the front here?
I'm not ready yet.
No question? Okay. All right. Joe. All right, those all's good.
Folks, actually, two questions. If elected, will you raise tax on citizens of Cecil County? And please explain your past performance, tax raising or raising fees to the citizen state.
Thank you, Joe. But are you addressing anyone in particular? Okay. We're going to keep this to about two seconds, max, because of our time constraints here. So let's start with if you choose to address this.
With just starting in, I would have to look at everything. I'm certainly not gonna be in any way. I'm not gonna be in any way.
Yeah, just hold it close to your mouth.
I am not gonna be in any way, shape, or form, ready to raise anyone's taxes. Fully, I am not.
Well, like I said, I would have to go too. I would say that it's a situation where every tax is needed to be raised. I would stand up to it and explain to the viability, you know, why I made that decision. But like everybody else, I don't wanna see my tax up. But I'm not gonna, never, ever. Hopefully, it'll never add, but that would be my shot.
I would not offer a tax increase on the city of Cecil County. I think the government and the federal government enough to tax people. Last year, county commissioners had a tax cut. The year before that, there was, we stayed and sent yields, so there was no increase.
Well, I have a lot of experience in setting taxes because as an Elton, you set the taxes and you set the budget. And I stand totally on my record, vision. And when I first opened in nineteen seventy-eight, taxes were ninety-eight cents per hundred in Elton. And I left office, years later, the taxes were eleven and they went from a dollar twenty-eight progressive. People got, now, and we went from a million dollar budget when I first in office to a ten million dollar budget when I left. So to me, you have to have funds to keep your community safe, to keep education going for the children, and to start new decks. But we must look at all different ways to raise money. Let me give you an example. In Elton, you needed to raise more funds. We taxed the citizens, but we wanted to raise more funds. We broadened the tax base. We created a motel tax. It's, I think today it's up over a million times what they get a year. There are other ways for the folks who wanna come to the community to pay the way, the same way we're traveling and we do and so forth. There are other ways to raise revenue in this community now taxing the citizens.
Watch your coffee.
Thank you. I have no record on taxes, citizen. I certainly don't want my taxes to go up. But I would definitely have to say, I don't wanna make any promises.
I am a significant property owner and a significant taxpayer at Cecil County. I have a lot of skin in this county and I do not wanna raise this. But I have to say that the answer to the question is, it depends. The state has been clearly playing with this. The state has taken our revenue for every gasoline you all purchased, money for state taxes, fuel taxes, go state and they keep it. They used to give stuff back to us so that we could make our roads and bridges here in the county. No longer. They've hijacked that money. It's a very good liability to pass on teacher pension abilities to the county. Very good liability. If it doesn't happen here, it's gonna be. And for anybody that ever says to you that we're gonna raise taxes, they don't talk about. And they're just kidding ourselves, because when we have significant tax line for teacher pensions, other pass-through expenses pass down onto the county, we're in trouble. And so at the end of the day, you make reasonable, responsible decisions. And for you to set a policy in advance that says absolute way, never, not good policy.
Joe, give me seconds if you would like. Thanks.
Anybody else at this table?
Yeah, John Mullins, retired engineer from the Delaware National. Also owns a ranch. No zebras. Who that's for. But I have a lot of questions, but I'll just want to pass it on. I guess the first one's gonna ask about is the concern of you with the formation of the political action committee. You see this as helping. And I'll jump on a fanway, because, you know, maybe as a holder, I firmly believe in everybody having their rights of voice. We in the horse industry are forming a political committee through the Maryland Horse League, because there's all these relations coming down. It's called especially this, that infiltration plan. And I'll ask a question about either. But my question to all of you is, what do you think the impact of all this being forced from public activities in order to get done that are in alignment with vision of all the people of Cecil County? Not just forming the PECs?
For my vision, for the.
No.
For my vision, for my vision, for the people, for the impact. I personally, for my, for the impact of it to help the people. With the horse that you're talking about, with, um, let me understand that, because I really don't wanna understand your question.
Let me try to clarify.
Okay.
Okay. In thirty-seven years as a horse farmer, I've seen us lean towards a vision that's other than the vision of the people. A bit of a group of people who are off to decide to influence our commission, okay? I call it a boy network, which I've said people. But is public action gonna appear to us as more good old, but a different sector of society?
I would not say it is not for me, because I do stand now what you're saying. I do not, I am not the good old boys. I am for all people, all people. I'm there to listen to everyone, be there for everyone. And I'm sorry, I didn't understand or didn't hear you the first time. I really apologize for that. I am not into the good old boys. Trust me. My integrity is not to me. I, as I said, for all people. Work with you in any way. It will not be just for the horse. It will not be for this person over here that is business to sell their right. It will not be for the betterment of one, it will not be the benefit of all.
Thank you, Pamela.
I hope I answered right.
Absolutely. We're gonna try to keep it to about seconds. Thanks, though. There's good questions here. Thank you.
To your question, sir, I'm not happy about the PACs. I don't think they're a good idea for our politics. I'm surprised, and the reason is because voters feel disanchised. When the people they elect don't listen to, don't take their thoughts into account and, for a better term, blow off and make things difficult for them, people fight back. And one way to do that is by forming a PAC. Would I listen to what PACs say? Absolutely. Will I listen to what individual says? Of course. I don't think they should gain more, or have more influence, but they should be listened to and they're reviewed. And I'm sure PACs, their ideas are not all bad. They might be tainted, but they are for people, influence their government. Thank you, Garrett.
I read about the new PAC. I don't think it's any secret about the new PAC and what their goals and objectives are. They've made that clear to me. They've made that clear to my ear. And, you know, they have the right to that. They're afforded that. But, you know, look, in just PACs, if they're gonna serve the good or a interest, we have to differentiate between PACs. Is there a PAC for the greater good or a PAC for self-interest? And if it's a self-interest, then what is that self-interest? What are the goals and objectives of self-interest? Is it the greater good or just to feed their self-interest? And that's my opinion. Thank you, Joe.
Interesting question, because I happened to talk to the chairman of this political action committee. It wasn't because I wanted to be vetted. And I was told I need to be vetted because they already made their decision. They had, and this was prior to actual filing deadline being. So when you're gonna have a PAC, you should have a fair PAC. Talk to all people. Every one of us at this table to see if it should be vetted. I was there at the end of the meeting at the restaurant down the street. And people, he says, can you recommend a Democrat or Republican? He never answered it. The PACs haven't said anything. When I was the chairman, he said, well, we already made decisions. I think that's a little bit of line for a group that says they represent all the people in this county. You know, want to represent all the people. To me, that doesn't represent the essence and the value. I stand on my, I wanna hear what the whole city county wanna say. Thank you, Keith. Thank you.
I don't have a whole opinion on a PAC. I mean, it could be, I think what it is, just really to preponder the composition of persons, you and me. Could it be a help or a hind? I think, again, it just depends upon who, you know, your perspective and how you feel about who could, who is used of, worship of the PAC. So you would be, or could be bad, or just factors that can make a difference there.
I believe everyone should be, I believe individually heard and groups should be heard. I liken to everyone. And I know that they're not new. PACs have been out for years and years and years. And specialists have been influencing or attempting to influence government for a long time. Now, special interests, special interests wanna benefit themselves, or special interests wanna benefit the whole community. Hence, there's no doubt that recently, a lot of new PACs, because of anger and frustration of what's been going on in government. So I understand, but I wanna get together and find, speak mine. And so at the end of the day, whether local PAC or a national, I have no profit, as an elected official, balance what's it. And I wanna make sure I vote for the best interest of majority of the citizens of Cecil County. Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Capra.
Tom Calpin, Maryland. I'd like each candidate to describe, under the new charter of government, what their role and responsibilities are, and who uniquely qualifies them to the responsibilities.
Why don't we start from this side? Just so you can hear what else says.
I have a duty active in the county because I am currently serving as a commissioner. And I'll be able to move forward, being a council member, and continue what we've been working on in Cecil County. But also suggests that burden or the responsibility of the council will be less than the commissioner. The executive will take on the day management of business of government in county. The executive will be implementing the executive decisions with the oversight of the council. The council will be more a slative branch that will be implementing regulations and ordinances, and certainly determining certain policies, and certainly approving budgets and other items the executive will be working. So the responsibilities of the council will be less. But there's a lot that we, commissioners are working on today. We won't be concluding in quickly. The business of government is concluded. There's always things on. There's always new challenges that, and there's a lot that's coming down the pike that I'm looking forward to.
Well, I have to say, as an eligible newcomer and never having held office, I hope I wouldn't go up. But I would, I would, I would hope I would bring, with my, well, I guess, I would hope I'd bring energy to it and nature of what I do, business, I would hope I could bring creativity to problems and hopefully bring solutions.
Well, my job is to represent five, the whole primary industry cluster. I represent all the people of county. I take on all the activity for all of Cecil County, not just five. And that is my intention. Interesting to hear the description that Mr. Hodge, however, the primary purpose, the committee, under the commission government, you know, it was, it's probably the thing I had to pretty much pass on. Under the council government, the first you do by the charter is the president of the council. And if you looked at the duties of the president of the council, the president of the council sets the agenda, decides what's on the agenda. County executives sitting there enjoying the evening. The actions are by the county council. Now, I encourage you to get targeted and see what you think. It's pretty clear. For example, we have members of the sitting commissioners who are running for county council. If one of them prevail, become a county judge. The county judge has the responsibility to, or excuse me, the central committee will recommend, and the council will support them. County executives says, congratulations, as there's a tie vote. And then the county executive passes. So.
The big issues I see is to be to put the time in county council. Presidently, county commissioner, I'm in there every day. Sometimes I'm here on a Saturday afternoon, but you have to put the time into this in order to see the results that need to taste. And that's one of the things I'm gonna do, is put the time into. And that's the biggest issue with serving in public, having the time to do. So I have the time to do, I wanna dedicate the time to do. The fight isn't gonna change really, from the commissioner to county council. You're still gonna have the goals and objectives of work in government, working for the greater good. So those don't change just form of government, responsibility.
Well, I cut short my bio part of Mr. Kraus' time at the beginning. But I'm a business owner. I have two other parts. We have a manufacturer out in Michigan. Every Monday, for two, sometimes four hours, we have us get together and talk about the needs of the business, the needs of our customers, and the needs of our employees. I look at the job as being an extension of it. I think that, you know, we set an agenda and we decide some issues, on other issues, go out and find more information. And from there, I'll talk to custom guys out on the floor, engineers, and I would do that here. Since I would be new, I would look at first, just watch and learn. And then, as I felt confident, you know, maybe challenging some decisions, but that would be, I would approach the job.
My experience, I have worked in Cecil County all of my life. Can you hear me?
Right below your chin.
I have worked in Cecil County all of my, I worked at the Cecil County School of Technology. I've worked with, and I know what it is and everything are about. I was to do this by several who live in the first district I live. And I will have to give up my position at Cecil County Schools Technology with chartering, which is perfectly fine with me, because I truly care about each and every person throughout every, and anyone that knows, well, how I truly care about each individual. And it will be my integrity and my experience and my, and my willingness, and some people it is a gift that I have, I don't know what it is, but the gift that I have is caring about others.
Thank you, Pamela. Tom, follow up on that. As I did to pass the mic around, I'm gonna ask everybody some questions, please. I should have asked you that for the purpose of the news. Thank you.
My name is Richard.
Is it on? Can you answer? My name is Richard Bull. I am a candidate for the executive. And here's my question. This is to everybody in the panel.
Read our new county charter and deal with all the provisions the charter has currently written. Thank you.
I have not read the charter in great depth. I have read it typically several times. I've studied it. I'm not an expert. I would say that I agree with it, only because the voters voted on it and cited it. And if it is, and we will deal with it until there is an amendment to it. Now, if I was writing the charter myself, I would have preferred to have an appointed executive, because I would have the politics out of the elect, or the selection of the executive. I would have, we could have gone through a stakeholder process like the board of education has for the candidate of the schools. And we would have selected, selected not the most qualified for managing the rest of county government. Too many times, politics in the way of doing good, and so discourages good, high-qualified people from running for office with the politics out. But the charter, what it is, I'm not gonna bad things about it, because the voters have chosen it and we will live with it and make it work.
Kind of like what Hodge said. I have read it, and the nice thing about it is it's sweet. I'd read it again. I'm certainly no spread in it. I'm gonna have to read a little, just next time around, take some notes. Just like Hodge said, you know, the voters vote, so, you know, we sort of have to make it work. And I think doing it, it would probably, probably get some amendments done to whatever, you know, a few years go by, you know, get it active and see how, see how it works. Thank you.
Yes, I have more than once. And you have to read it, because it is twenty-nine, twenty-seven page. And to say that you have problems, well, as I also said, the voters' county chose to adopt a charter form of government, county executive. I think first thing, you gotta just put it in place and appropriately get it, and see if there's opportunities to, well, let's just do a swatting on the charter. See where we need changes, if we need, and see how much better we can. I'm a total believer in form of government, the people here in this community could change somebody somewhere else. I strongly hope that the people are not sure of their government, or their opinion may not favorable with charter government, give it a chance. I, all the folks that just said, it's a instrument that the people said this is what our county buy. Let's take it forward, get the people in office, and then start getting them in conversion to run this county under a form of government, which is why I think I'm very qualified. Thank you.
I've read the charter, and my opinion, it's gonna boil down to implementation. It's a new document, so it has to be worked through the process. And to Mr. Moore's point, maybe there have to be some addenda need to it or amendments. I think at the end of the day, the bones of the document are solid. It's just filling implementation piece to make sure that the new form of government runs as smooth as possible. I think that's what it's after here at the end of the day, just a matter of how you get there.
The last time I read the charter was before I voted. I re-read the issues with the county council. But as someone has said, it is our job as the county council to enforce the charter and forward. So in answer to the yes, I agree with it. And I will work my hardest to implement it and keep things rolling. And that's the reason why I'm running. I hope that certain side influences we have are actually working against implementing the charter. And I don't wanna see that happen.
It is workable, but it's all of this working together and not being difficult. Thank you. Yes, I have read.
Move us back to the corner. Any question they'd like to address, either an individual candidate on or as a group?
My question tonight is, my name is Stephen Englund. My question tonight is, Commissioner Mullen, in light of your vote and the carpenter's property of your building, to enter residential, another more recent decision, would you consider yourself a pro-business candidate? And if so, how would you defend the decisions you've already enacted?
Those, with regard to the car point issue, the citizens came forward down. I felt they had a, they should have been heard. They brought documents in, they brought testimony, it just wasn't in, we don't want it in backyard. With the zoning issue, I suggested a compromise to the applicant property that would have an MEB overlay on that property, which was consistent parcel next door. Parcel next door, there were two properties. One was zoned AOR with an E overlay. The parcel question that you're asking about was zoned heavy manufacturing or industry, and did not have an overlay. And I suggested at a hearing that if we had a compromise, listening to the citizens that live down there, that would have the same type of overlay as the parcel next door, change the zoning altogether. That still gave the applicant opportunity to apply to appeals and the commission to work with that parcel of land. That also gave the citizens down there an opportunity to try and be heard during that process, instead of having them shut during the whole process. The applicant representative told me, I was kicking the can in the road, and unacceptable. The parcel in question was also zoned A at the time. Back, I asked again, and they turned me down. Citizens came with their exhibits, they came with their testimony. There was a large mass of folks sitting in here this evening, and at the end of the day, I listened to citizens that lived down there. I thought they had a right to be heard.
At this time, Stephen, follow up.
Sunny, Karen, the other half of the dynamic, always have a question? As resources gets scarce, there are innovative solutions to be efficient and effective. Do more with less.
Can you speak up? Can you speak at all a little bit?
Okay. As resources gets scarce, innovative solutions, more efficient and effective, are going to become important as we do more with. Give me an example of something you have to be more and effective with as resources gets scarce. Sorry.
I would like to start the question with Jim Kraus, and then go immediately to you. Thank you. Yes?
Thank you. Specifically, as mayor, the quickest one that comes to my mind is the community, great fuels and lowered costs, privatizing water and sewer management. We had our own individuals who we trained, and in order for us to, we had it, we had a study, and the reasons were, it's just no question, we should go to privatize. We bid the project, and it came in essentially under what we were doing, and we were able to expand it over cost and for other areas. So I, privatization with water was my, my stance.
With regard to horses, I think the big one would be public safety, with, if you look at the geographic county as a whole, I think it's important to work homeowners association, similar to Crystal Beach. Commissioner Moore and I started a meeting down there, where they're setting up their own crime and police, citizen volunteering to be the eyes of the community, to keep an eye on things. So you don't need pressure on law enforcement, all through the community itself, just giving how stretched out the graphics of the county is. Citizens now take on that responsibility to just own things, to be an extra scientist and ears, if anything looks out of the ordinary. I think at the end of the day, that law enforcement in return, so you, hey, I copied the license plate of that car, it was so you can get to the quad sooner. I think that's a big, I also think the big thing, too, is regarding first responders. The volunteer companies, next generation of people coming up through, I think you want to encourage them. Some of us have attended volunteer fire company dinners. I think it's refreshing to see young men in uniform, either an EMT or a firefighter, that may be as young as a senior in high school or in their early twenties. That is a key resource that I think really need to move forward with. When there's a calling that wants to volunteer as responders, to encourage that. The world needs more people like that, and I think we need to encourage that.
Without having any experience in terms of government, to your point, the company I work for, we work with ag producers, pet food manufacturers. When ethics started to become so popular, and corn prices went through the roof, our customers kept us saying we needed to be accurate, weighing, and producing our product. So, we sat down with engineers, and we took accuracy on doing this sort of thing from three to half a percent. You just have to do a better job and keep your calm and do more with us. As Mr. said, I think, you know, for more volunteers, just in fire department or the fire companies, and first responders, and other positions in the county, we need to do that, and believe that actually making that a little harder, people are, in recent past, were becoming less into volunteer. We need to make them feel wanted to them, and let them go ahead and question their ethics.
As Mullen's knew, my youngest, Travis Bailey, is a volunteer fighter in Cecil County. It was his part in giving, and that's what I feel I am. And as where I work at the School of Technology, we dealt with majors there. We dealt with cuts. We went to, on their boat, where they took positions from us. And I, as a homeowner, I do my own cutting. A lot of people find it hard to believe, I don't have cable TV, I don't even have a TV, because I will not have expense, I do it to the radio. People make fun of me in that act, but I know how it is now. And working government, it used to have a grant right. Now, I know you're not everything paid for by grant, but there's government grant sources out there, and you can, some investing, and go out there and see what is available. And I am to do that. I will do whatever it takes for the best people. And if they have asked me to do this, talk to them, and any, if something comes up, and you have, I need your help, please be available. If I call your home, you do not answer me, I will be on your doorstep for your, it's a two-way street.
Mr. Hodge?
I know that change is usually personal, and I have several items I could suggest. I fully supported the sale of earth and the waste of earth. I think that those assets were a public dream. They were not as well as I think they are. I think that a private can manage them better, and I think they could be sold and useful liability now and in the future. I also suggested with some fuel tanks right out of this building, there's thousands of gallons of fuel, so there are, and other public vehicles and other vehicles didn't have to go station all the way down to the central landfill. Thousands of gallons of fuel are being saved, just because we have a fueling station here behind the building. Also created a advisory committee, because individually, the smallest people aren't going to be able to solve a problem and have the most way of doing business. We brought in some people to help us, their brains, studies issues, and help us come up with some agency issues. One more is, we did make an investment in GPS units, public works vehicles, to make sure that our snows kept on the route, to keep our drivers and these to the grindstand, and make sure that we're not sleeping out back. With the investment, we'll bring great rewards to the citizens.
Again, as a political newcomer, I think I can answer this question as its own, you know, low on something or kind of a resource, whether it be resources or cash, sometimes it's just a symbol of working harder and working long. You know, and if you don't have the resource, like say, the manufacturing company, you know, you figure out, if a customer comes to you for a problem, you just play to produce that for them. Thank you.
We're going to take a minute right now for a break, and at that time, I'm sorry.
I wanted a little bit of clarification from Mr. B. Talk about the private discrimination of the Washington, the revenue, the revenue deal, the costing, the, or was it another one of your problems? I just...
It was one sewer operation, running the management of Bohents. Biggest problem that we had with water side of it at, I go back to the foundation took place about, I was in office about 10 years, let's say 10, 15 years, and the initial savings, I think, $400,000. And that was, that was in the water side. But the real cost, the real cost when you're trying your own, your own jobs of the space with your own people, is to keep people adequately trained. You know, and what got into us was back when they said fluoride in water. That was what gave us the, to go out and see options to, how in the world do we keep up with these mandates that come down from the government with never any funds mandate? And then, we were at the same time involved with the waste that was going, discharge at the nutrient, I'm not a chemist, but any of these are...